Go ahead and call some meeting order. First item is a roll call.
Alderman Knox.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderman Skinner.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Alderman Sol.
Here.
Alderman Lindberg. There is a quorum.
Next item being vacation led by Pastor Daryl Jones from Crossroads Church, followed by pledge of allegiance for Alderman Myers.
Thank you, Father, for your care, your goodness, and your love. Thank you for this community and for these leaders, our city staff, for all that work together in unity. And even, even through the, the challenging conversations, for the good of our neighbors and for the good of our children and grandchildren. So that they can grow up in a community like Green Valley. Blessing tonight's proceedings, the business discussion, the needs. May it just be done for your glory in the name of Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next time is the approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mayor.
Seeing no proclamations, move on to public comment then. Uh, we ask anyone who wishes to address the board, please come forward to the podium and microphone. Make sure you've given your name and address for the record.
Evening, I'm Chuck Johnston, six eleven Sal's West, Cross Creek Drive, Green Valley. Coming, I thought we had this resolved last year and there's a little change to it this, I mean, last year they, the board authorized paying a, um, off-duty police officer to help escort Santa bus. And I never really wanted the city to pay anything. This year, I want to talk to Chief Turner, um, I requested that the VIPs be allowed to use the VIPs car as an escort car behind us. You know, it's, the, what I'm thinking about is the safety of the kids. We've been doing this for thirty years, we've never had anyone hurt except me and one of my helpers got bit by dogs once. Um, but, uh, it's, the kids, when they see that Santa bus, they come running out there, um, they aren't always watching for traffic, they're excited to see Santa. And having a official escort be in front of us and behind us helps control traffic and will help avoid any accident like that. And rightfully so, Chief Turner told me, well, whenever the city's doing something like this, they're putting themselves out at potential pursuit if something should happen. Well, if something does happen, anyone's going around that Santa bus with a official vehicle in front and back, they're gonna be the negligent ones. So, and it's, it's, you know, I mean, we've had people go around before, we've never had anyone injured, but it's a minute risk. And the, the city has insurance, um, if something did happen, the insurance will fault, cover that. But I think for the safety of the kids in town, I think it's worth the risk of the city to allow, uh, one of the VIPs to drive the VIP's vehicle behind the Santa bus. Um, James Garcia always, drives his vehicle in the front, which is marked just like a unmarked police car and license irons and everything else. They feel, feel that's an official vehicle, they feel if we had the VIP's car, they would also feel that official vehicle and I think it would help, um, for the safety of the kids. I'm asking that someone, you know, make a motion to allow the VIP's car to be used as an escort. If need be, I'll pay the gas for that, I'm more concerned about the safety of the kids.
Chief, are we, I mean, I, I, I see the memo here, or, or, we haven't denied the use of the vehicle, have we?
It would be contingent upon us putting together a safety plan, sorry, a safety plan that would allow, uh, us to have, uh, some safety protocols that were in place. If we're gonna be taking ownership of a road, if the city is going to, uh, start to block roadways and prevent people, uh, free flow of traffic, then we have obligation to make sure those things are done in a safe manner. And, and, uh, we've had discussion, um, here just this last week. And some of the recommendations, uh, were not approved by, uh, Mr. Johnston, he didn't like those ideas. And, um, again, this was given ten days before the event started. Uh, ordinance requires between sixty to twenty-one days prior to the event, so we could have time for these planning opportunities.
We, we don't block traffic, we pull over the side of the street, um, we allow, allow traffic to flow through, that's why we need to control the traffic. Um, in thirty years, we've never had a, an injury based on it. And I think if, you know, risk the city's gonna take versus the potential for safety for kids, I think it outweighs anything. I mean, we, we went over the plans, I've given them a written plan now that, that I hope meets his, his needs. But, um, um, I didn't even realize there was a timeframe on this. I had planned on going and getting the permit before we did it and I thought it was just a, a signed deal that, you know, I pay my fifteen dollars, I get the permit and we do it like we've been doing for thirty years. But that's all I have said, I'd like someone to make a, a motion if they could to, you know, approve the use of the VIP's car with the Santa bus. And I say if need be, I'll pay the gas on it, we have VIP volunteers, they're all trained in traffic control, that's all this is, is just a traffic control vehicle.
Mayor. There is a, there is another option, uh, the, the write-up I had presented to the board consisted of two options, there's a third option and I discussed this this morning with, uh, Mr. Johnston. We, uh, if he's willing to pay for the gas, that same money could be applied to buying an actual magnetic light that would mount on top of a personal car. Just like the car that's already leading the vehicle, uh, Mr. Garcia's is a personal car with personal lights. Uh, it's providing the same amount of coverage and lighting that a city vehicle would be offering. Uh, again, I'm not opposed to, uh, the Santa bus or, I really think it's, it's a good thing, but it needs to be done in a orderly manner if the city's going to be engaged in that, uh, operation. Every operation we do in town now has an operational safety plan and, uh, that has not been done for this one.
And I do, that is a good alternative, except then I got someone in the vehicle that isn't necessarily safety trained like the, the VIPs are. And it will be a VIP's person driving the VIP's vehicle, but.
Well, if there's a VIP's train, then a VIP's could drive another vehicle that's trained and do it, correct?
I understand, but I can also take Joe Schmo and have him throw lights on his car and he goes out there and has no idea what he's doing for traffic, doesn't have the vest, doesn't have the lights, so. The VIPs normally help us most of the time, in fact, that's how this started this year, is I thought it was a given thing that the city was gonna allow the paid, um, off-time officer when we need. And I just had Mr. Garcia get with Chief Turner, see if, you know, if they, if they could work out a schedule when we might or might not have VIP's volunteers. And that's what started the thing and that's, that's when I realized that there was a timeframe on applying for the permit.
Make a motion now or do business?
You what?
Should the motion be made now or do business or?
They can, they can motion anytime.
I'd make a motion that we, this year, let's get this all straightened out so we're not hearing again next year, allowing the use of the VIP's vehicle and get it, and then get it con, down in concrete and what we expect and what he needs to have and, because it is for the kids, so.
Uh, okay, so, uh, you're making a motion then to allow the use of, of the VIP's vehicle, uh, and that's without the recommendations that were set forth by Chief or?
What, what, what was the issue with having, uh, because they said that Mr. Garcia has a vehicle that has emergency lights equipped with it? And, uh, what was the issue with, uh, another VIP driving a personal owned vehicle?
I don't think there is.
There's, that's what I'm recommending, I think that should be the, what transpires this year, because, uh, I met with them last year and, and we discussed some of this. Uh, we did an ad hoc approach last year, which the board agreed to put this at them and said, we don't want to do it this year, so let's resolve it. And here we are the next year and we're trying to get it resolved, but we didn't, we weren't given anything to work on to know, uh, what the plan was. So, uh, tonight I just got handed this plan, I'm just reading as I'm talking to you, um, but I, I do think we have a reasonable plan with a volunteer using their vehicle. Uh, it would be the same coverage as it would have if it was a, a VIP's vehicle.
So, at, at that point, if they're using, uh, two personally owned vehicles to do this, one, one equipped with these lights you're talking about, um, when it comes to ordinances, using red and blue lights in emergency vehicles. Uh, I know that that's been broadened like with tow trucks and stuff over the years, uh, is that, is it basically just them asking for permission at that point to have the red and blue lights on a pub, public roadway?
Exactly, yeah, and that would be, uh, outlined in the permit that, it would be only for defensive measures, couldn't use it to interfere with anybody's traffic flow, just the warning lights, but they could use those lights for that reason.
They can use red and blue lights if you, if we give them permission, because I thought that was a state thing.
Yeah, we, uh, for the permit, you know, we can, we can give them that permission to, to be able to provide that safety for the community, yes.
So I guess, uh, so what's, what's the problem? I mean, if you're, I, I don't understand what the issue is. Is it, like, is the issue, like, another VIP doesn't want to use a, their own personal owned vehicle? Yeah, you can come up. Yeah, Chuck, you can.
The unmarked car the VIPs have looks like an official vehicle, um, it looks like an unmarked car.
Is it owned by the city?
Yes, it's a VIP's vehicle that the VIPs are supposed to use for VIP, VIP's activities.
But this, you know, I think if it's our vehicle being used, my take is that opens us up to liability, I assume that's why the chief is saying they need to use their own vehicles.
And I did reach out to legal and they affirmed that.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
We do get extended into that area.
Yeah, I, I very much remember sitting here last year, you know, having the same conversation in, in the board, um, you know, pretty much saying, you know, hey, let's figure this out this year, just what you just said and, uh, you know, allowed the vehicles to be used and here we are again, I don't. Yeah, I believe, I believe we opened it up for volunteer, uh, overtime as well for an officer to escort them last year.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't gonna be volunteer, the city was gonna pay their expenses and I didn't want that, because we have volunteers that would do this on the VIPs. And, um, the city's open to liability as soon as they, they, uh, give me the permit and I screw it up, because they vokated.
Well, your, your exact quote is, the city has insurance and the city would pay for that. And, and me, as somebody who represents our, my constituents, who would be the ones paying for that, it's not the city to be paying for it, it'd be my constituents and, and I would like to, to limit the amount of liability we're putting on my constituents.
Well, you're already paying the insurance, the insurance is there, it's not going up because you're allowing the VIP's car to, to escort the Santa bus. So the, the money's already, already out there, it's already allocated, we already have the insurance, we've never had a problem. And I think it's highly unlikely we will, but I want to make sure the kids are safe and I think the safest way is with a VIP's car.
I'd, I'd like to ask legal, if, if there's a VIP's driving either one of these vehicles, where's that put the city?
So if you've got a city vehicle involved, that's where the liability comes from, but if you have a VIP's volunteer, and that's the way I understand the program, is that there are volunteers, that, um, if they're driving a personal vehicle, there's not going to be the direct liability potentially for the city. As there would be if a city vehicle was involved, so it's the, it's city's ownership of the vehicle, it's the potential liability. And one of the problems you would have with that is that the insurance may or may not cover that, uh, depending on the circumstances of the incident.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wanting, that's if it, if a VIP was driving a personal vehicle, we were still hung out there, so if they're, they're driving their own vehicle, city's not hung out.
Correct.
But isn't the city potentially liable for okaying the permit?
No.
I like, I like the idea of allowing them the, the red and blues on their personal owned vehicles, I'm not a huge fan of opening up the city to liabilities, but, um. Yeah, I mean, this is the exact same conversation we had last year. Right, and that's, and that's why we, we offered to pay the overtime for off-duty officer if they wanted to use their time to escort.
But last year was such a, like, getting even shorter notice than we are now, I believe, we're pretty close to it. Uh, and we just wanted to get it done and make sure that Chuck could do the Santa bus, it's a huge thing for Green Valley, I appreciate what you do, but again, I don't think we need to open up the city to any type of liability on it. And the fact that you've never had a problem in the past would influence whether you have a, a problem in the future?
We haven't had a problem because we've had the, the proper escorts, we, for, this started out, the police escorted me everywhere I went. Um, when the police escort, when if we paid an off-duty officer to, um, escorts in the police vehicle, the city be open for the liability. There's, you know, what liability is there, if someone comes around a, a, a police vehicle with lights flashing, they're the negative, not, you're in party.
Do you, do you watch the news, I mean, cops are, our cops are getting sued constantly, you know, I mean, our cops are doing their job and, and, or, or going to jail for doing their job and stuff, so.
And I mean, and, and I've been in insurance and I've been in courts and I know any names tied to it all, they can sue, and yes, they can sue because the city issued me a permit.
Are, are we making a motion on this or?
Well, we've never got a second, so.
They seconded it yet.
Yeah.
You made a motion to allow the use of the VIP's vehicle for it, but, so is there a second to that? Okay, so the fact that, I guess, I guess my question is, we have the option, correct, if I'm reading this, that they can use the VIP's vehicle if they meet certain requirements, correct? Or we do, or do we not have that option?
No, that's, I mean, that's.
Now, it's option two, right, it's listed on his memo?
Yeah, that would require us to sit down and make an operational plan, which these generally will take a matter of weeks of discussion back and forth. And, and the original, well, four or five of the items I've mentioned to Mr. Johnston, he did not like those options. And it came to, we couldn't get past some of those original ones. Uh, so I, again, I'm willing down and, and talk to him more, but, uh.
What is it with that option that you, I guess, wasn't, he's saying it wasn't medium?
I don't remember what other options he threw out there, I mean, you know, he, he gives the option, you know, having volunteered with their four-way flashers on, which people don't pay any attention to. Um, he did call me to smoke, he mentioned the possibility of getting a light put in our private vehicle, I don't even have the ability, the ability to do that by this coming weekend, but, um, you know, it's.
I mean, it's Monday or it's Tuesday.
To me, if you don't think the city can stand the risk to, 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 um, make sure the kids of this town are projec, protected, I don't know what you guys are doing.
You know, my, my personal opinion on this is, I don't, I don't know why we don't, you know, park somewhere in a neighborhood and have the kids come to us.
Because the parents won't come out, the parents will not, if they're sitting and watching a football game, they don't come out, halftime, they don't come out with the kids there, I see four thousand kids a year and I do that because I drive to everyone's house and get them out so they can come see me. That's what this has been all about, it's not about me, it's not about anything, I don't do this for me, I put a lot of money in this and a hell of a lot of time. Um, I want to get as many kids out there as we can and the parents just, if, you know, they're not gonna bring, a lot of them will, but a lot of them won't. And I want to get to see as many kids in this town as I can.
If, if time's an issue for getting those, uh, I have a prime account, I can order, uh, light bars for you, have them here within, by Wednesday at the latest, if that would help you.
All right, well, I'm sorry, the city doesn't think kids are worth protecting.
I do. I.
We're, we're, we're trying to come to a solution, Chuck.
Yeah, we're gonna.
I'm not.
I'm asking the city for help to protect the children in this town.
We are offering it, what, the problem is, a prob, apparently you don't want to follow what the chief of police is recommending needs to happen. I mean, number one, proof of insurance for the event, do we have that?
No.
Okay, so that's why we can't, okay, how, I mean, because he said he would sit down and get the operational safety plan done before he starts, that's not.
We'll have insurance for the event?
Well, that's one of the things.
Not an event, I drive a bus and I go house to house.
And then compliance with safety, I mean, I, I don't think it's unreasonable what chief is asking in order to have the vehicle available.
He's not asking, he's not, he's not giving the vehicle available, he's, he's saying, no, you can't use the VIP's car, even though the VIP's car.
He's saying you can use the VIP's car if you meet these requirements.
Are you saying that? That's not what I heard.
Well, that was option two, was there an option was that if you want to use a VIP's car, we're gonna have to sit down and go over the plan and you're gonna have to adhere to it. And if you don't adhere to it, then we're gonna stop the event in, in this, at this spot. So if that's something that you can't come to an agreement on, which in our meetings, you weren't able to come to those, so that leaves us with, that's off the table, because you don't want to do this.
Which to me sounds like is making the event safer and you're saying we don't want it to make it safe, it sounds like we're trying to make the event safer.
I do want to make it safer, I want to have that, the two unmarked, that look like unmarked vehicles out there that will slow down traffic and.
And, and he's saying we can do that, we just need to do X, Y, and Z.
Using the VIP's car was never thrown out to me, that, no, that we're not gonna put the city in extra, in extra liability like Alderman Skinner and Alderman Sol said.
Chuck, if you, if you have another VIP who's going to use their POV, I'll, I'll buy the lights for you guys.
Part of the problem is that, is sometimes I'll switch to, to vehicles a day, I don't know that every vehicle's gonna have the necessary hookups for the lights. That chief says that they're magnetic vehicles, he just moves one vehicle, another easily.
As long as they have a, uh, the cigarette lighter, it's, they'll plug right into that.
I have a cigarette lighter in my car.
Well, it's not.
I haven't seen a cigarette lighter in a car for twenty years.
It's, well, it's not a cigarette lighter anymore, like, I, I say the cigarette lighter.
Best USB, USB ports.
It's not a cigarette lighter, but.
Some have the USB ports, some have the USB ports, um, I'm just, I'm just, you know.
I mean, some of this stuff is like so basic, like insurance for the event, background checks for people involved, um, I mean, this stuff just seems common sense. I mean, do we allow any events in our city without insurance?
I've got insurance on the bus.
The fair have insurance, does the food truck Fridays have insurance, I mean, this just seems like basic stuff. I mean, I, I couldn't have a wedding without buying event insurance.
When I, when I promote car shows and Cars and Coffees, I get event insurance.
Yeah, I mean, this is just basic stuff, Chuck.
I've got liability insurance on the vehicle.
But don't, don't sit here and blame it on us for ruining the event when you can't do the basic stuff. This is basic one-on-one stuff.
Insurance on the bus, that's all I do is drive a bus.
We sit here, Chuck, we sat here a year ago and had the same conversation and we, we bent over backwards to help you and said, don't let it happen again, get with the chief, work through all this stuff. And here we are, it's almost December and we're having the same conversation.
I didn't know there was gonna be the problem again this year.
We had the same conversation right here last year, Chuck, and you had all year, we should be having this conversation in June, July. Instead, you're gonna walk off and, well, you guys are gonna ruin Christmas for the kids, what are you talking about, Chuck? We've had a year.
I'm, I'm just very disappointed.
No, we're throwing a fit, is what we're doing, Chuck. No, I'm, I'm disappointed that we're sitting here having this conversation.
I am too, because I thought it was, I thought it was resolved last year.
If anybody should, if anybody's to blame for this, Chuck, look in the mirror.
Okay, all right.
Uh, back to public comment then, anyone else wish to address the board? Seeing none on to consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Most of Alderman Skinner to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? None on fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Seeing no previous business, new business, presentations, or public hearings, move on to your resolutions. First resolution is R twenty-five dash fifty-two, it's a resolution by the Board of Alderman of the City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement with Microman Industries LLC for one set of equipment and upfitting costs for one new Ford Explorer.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the resolution R twenty-five dash fifty-two.
Okay, most of Alderman Knox to approve resolution R twenty-five dash fifty-two, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor members of the board, this would be the, uh, the upfitting for the vehicle that was approved at the last board meeting.
Question or questions? Seeing none on fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Next up, resolution R twenty-five dash fifty-three, is a resolution by the Board of Alderman of the City of Green Valley approving and adopting a new purchasing policy as outlined by the attachment to this resolution.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number R twenty-five dash fifty-three.
Okay, most of Alderman Sol to approve resolution R twenty-five dash fifty-three, do I have a second?
Second.
Knox, any discussion?
Mayor members of the board, one of the things we wanted to do was make sure that our purchasing policy actually matched what was reasonable, uh, for now, as far as, uh, costs and things that have gone up. So our previous one was, uh, last updated in two thousand thirteen, um, and one of the things with it, so a purchase order had to be made for anything over five hundred. So with the way costs are going now, essentially, um, you know, if two tires are replaced on a police car at this point, you're having to go through the process of write a PO and, and go through that and it's become a very monotonous, uh, uh, process when a department head should be able to approve that. So one of the things that we would be changing in this one is making that up to two thousand, um, we're not changing the amount of anything that would come to the board, that's still ten thousand, which is what it currently is. Uh, but it's just trying to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible on a, a daily basis and not doing undue work and just kind of, you know, after, where are we at, thirteen years or twelve years? Just kind of updating, uh, some of the policies that we have.
Ken, I'm sorry, can you give me an example of that again, like, when this would?
Yeah, so the way our policy is right now, um, anything over five hundred requires a purchase order. Uh, so one of the things that comes up is vehicle maintenance wise, even now, some of the cars, by the time you get two tires replaced, you know, if you're at five oh one or five oh five, um, chief would have to have somebody go through and input, uh, if it was for police car. Make a PO for it and go through that approval process instead of just getting the, the tires, so it'd be moving that, the big change is moving that amount up to two thousand. Um, towards, you know, department head has the leeway to just go and expend those funds, obviously, it's only funds that are already approved and the budget, you can't go above that. But that's one of the, I guess, the classic things, it ends up taking quite a bit of department heads' time.
Who are adjusting for inflation basically?
Twelve years, yeah.
Yeah, one steer tire on the dump truck's gonna be seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars and now you're gonna jump through hoops just to get it fixed, set on the side.
Yeah, and we, we've changed, updated language a little bit in there too, because one of the big things now for municipalities too is trying to piggyback off of competitively bid contracts that were done, uh, through other jurisdictions. So it's kind of changing the wording to make that a little more, to push for that a little bit more.
Would it be, would it be just as effective to make that, uh, specific to vehicles?
That was just the one example, because I just did a PO for it not very long ago, but it's really, I mean, five hundred, huh? Yeah, I mean, it, the reality is five hundred just goes.
Yeah, it's not enough.
It goes fast now.
That's why we have supervisors in place and checks and balances if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Any discussion? Seeing none on fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. For resolutions, next up the ordinances.
This will be the second reading of bill number B twenty-five dash sixteen, this is an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a concrete mixing plant.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the second reading of bill number B twenty-five dash sixteen and approve it as ordinance number two four seven seven.
Okay, most of Alderman Myers to approve bill B twenty-five dash sixteen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four seventy-seven, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, it's be a roll call?
Oh, sorry, are we, are we absolutely positive that this is not gonna cause an issue with dust or pollutants? Because it's fairly close to a residential neighborhood and I don't want to have to have problems.
Yeah, so this is actually more of like a self-contained, um, kind of unit, it's not a big plant, um, and so at, uh, P and Z public hearing, well, actually, prior to that, I guess, uh, the neighbors were involved in.
They're on board, they seem to be on board.
Yeah.
Not my ward, but I just, I don't want to deal with it down there.
Yeah, it's not the, like, it falls under this for permit, but it's not a, a, a big plant.
Anything else? All right, so it'll be roll call?
Alderman Knox.
Yes.
Alderman Myers.
Yes.
Alderman Skinner.
Yes.
Alderman Bray.
Yes.
Alderman Sol.
Yes.
This one passes five zero. And this will be the second reading of bill number B twenty-five dash seventeen, this is an ordinance calling an election in the City of Green Valley, Missouri on April seventh, twenty twenty-six.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the second reading of bill number B twenty-five dash seventeen, approve it as ordinance number twenty-four seventy-eight.
Uh, most of Alderman Skinner to approve bill B twenty-five dash seventeen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four seventy-eight, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, it's be a roll call?
Alderman Sol.
Yes.
Alderman Bray.
Yes.
Alderman Skinner.
Yes.
Alderman Myers.
Yes.
Alderman Knox.
Yes.
This one passes five zero. This will be the first read of bill number B twenty-five dash eighteen, this is an ordinance of the Board of Alderman of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, amending chapter two two five, nuisances for the purposes of adding graffiti.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the first reading of the bill number B twenty-five eighteen and make a second reading by title only.
Okay, most of Alderman Sol to approve bill B twenty-five dash eighteen for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Skinner, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, if you remember back to the last meeting, uh, this was something, um, that legal was directed to, to work through in ordinance that would include graffiti into the language for, um, our nuisance code. So that is what you had before you was, uh, making it where that can be considered a, a nuisance now per code.
Any discussion or questions?
On, on a situation like, uh, what we're countering over here, well, first off, I guess, have we had any converse? Is there any, been any conversations with Dollar General at all since then?
There has, um, their, their willingness has not been, uh.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah.
Um. Is there a way that we can, uh, include language in here that if it's a dividing fence with, uh, a commercial property, that the commercial owner's responsible for their side of the fence?
I think this is just setting that we can prosecute graffiti, right?
What? It's on.
What I, what this does is simply defines graffiti for purposes of the code and then allows the city to go through the abatement process. Questions as to who's the owner of the fence, who's responsible for a dividing line, something like that. Those are issues that are gonna come up during the abatement process, and there are things that would have to be answered by the, the folks enforcing it. But as of right now, this is just to add it to the code.
Okay, so if we wanted to clarify that a dividing fence between different zoning. Categories, whatever the proper terminology is, if we wanted to, you know, put the, the commercial properties responsible for their side of the fence or something, that would have to be done. In a different ordinance or something like that.
Potentially that could be done, there is some state law out there that it may conflict with, but that's, that wasn't part of the.
No, I get that.
Together here.
Cool.
This is the groundwork, just start working on what.
No, it makes sense, I'm with you.
But if I'm not mistaken, didn't legal say if we did something like that, then. Such as the company up north, and then use their side of the fence for whatever they want, because they're responsible.
And it's, it's a question of who is responsible for the fence, and that would be answered by the law as it exists outside of the code. Uh, there's a lot of common law issues with that, there's a lot of state law issues with that. And so the issue of if we were to ask a particular entity to abate a nuisance and they were to say, we're not responsible for that, it's this property owner. That's something that would just come up during that case.
That makes sense.
It may be very difficult to outline that in the code, especially if there is state law that could preempt that field. It's something we can look at, but I think it's something that is. Uh, it's, it's fraught with complications, and we need some time to look at that.
You, you gotta realize you create. Fence law in general, property lines of that law goes back.
Hundreds of years.
The founding of our country, right, and this has been, property has been an issue.
I read on it on the weekends, fence law.
So doing anything to move that around is gonna be difficult for us, is my reading of it, my research on it.
Did they get tagged again?
No, it's just everywhere. Okay, no, perfect, thank you.
Okay, additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
This will be the second reading of bill number B twenty-five dash eighteen. This is an ordinance by the Or- Board of Aldermen of the City of Grand Valley, amending chapter two two five nuisances for the purposes of adding graffiti.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the second reading of bill number B twenty-five eighteen and approve it as ordinance number twenty-four seventy-nine.
Like a most, most of Alderman sold approve, uh, bill B twenty-five dash eighteen for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-four seventy-nine, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, it's be roll call?
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Alderman Knox?
Yes.
Alderman Sol?
Yes.
Alderman Bray?
Yes.
Alderman Skinner?
Yes.
This passes five zero. This will be the first reading of bill number B twenty-five dash nineteen. This is an ordinance approving the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget and comprehensive fee schedule of the City of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Oh, sorry. I move that we set the first reading of bill number B twenty-five dash nineteen, bring it back for its final read, second read, by title only at our next regular meeting.
Okay, I have most of Alderman Bray to approve bill B twenty-five dash nineteen for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Sol, any discussion?
Mayor members of the board, as you are aware, we had our workshop and went through, uh, the budget and where we're at on that. Um, the last page in your booklet there actually shows the changes that have been made, um, since that budget workshop, um, which were the changes that were approved by the board at that time. But we did want to list out those, those changes. So we, it is, it does represent the, how it's presented to you now.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, that's it for ordinances, next, I have the city attorney's reports.
Nick, give me your favorite thing to report.
I'm not the only one.
He's researching, he's researching.
Researching fences.
I have nothing to report this time, thank you.
All right, uh, next up, city administrator staff reports.
Uh, Mr. Davies.
Uh, we're in progress for, um, three new shelters and Armstrong Park, uh, all three, uh, structures have been erected, the roofs. Uh, we've got power to two of them, lighting and outlets, we're hoping to have that third one, uh, have one electrical done in a couple of days. Right now, we're dealing with, uh, weather, but the concrete pads for all three shelters. Um, the rains kind of hit us here, so, uh, as soon as we find some drier weather, they'll be, we'll get the concrete pads for on all three and.
Um, speaking of Armstrong Park, on the fourth, we do have the, uh, mayor's tree lighting event, uh, so that is at six o'clock, uh, just right next to us here at Armstrong. Uh, the only other thing we had, uh, didn't, uh, want to have the board look at, uh, canceling the second meeting in December, which would be the twenty-second, so the week of Christmas. So we'll have all the business wrapped up at the next meeting that needs to be done before the end of the year.
With that heart next to you.
Do you get it now or?
Want that motion now or next?
I mean, if you did it now, then we, it's for sure, and we can just move forward with that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion, second? Any discussion then? All right, seeing none, all favor of, uh, canceling the second read in December, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? That's enough of that reports?
Yes.
All right, next up then will be Board of Aldermen reports, Alderman Sol?
Uh, nothing.
Alderman Bray?
Um, I'll go on record with Alderman Sol, I'll, I'll throw in on that if that's the way Chuck wants to go.
Oh, the emergency lights?
Including any ancillary wiring, temporary wiring, it, it can't be that hard.
Right.
Um, beyond that, Shannon, where we had on the, uh, playground, the swings, getting the.
Ford place.
Is that done? That did get done?
So that's actually a question for next year.
Oh, it's in here, I just missed it, okay, okay. Awesome. Uh, then the other question I had was actually for Jamie, I think. Um, if a local establishment is trying to get, like, an event license. And the county's not cooperating.
I spoke with that business.
I'm sure you did.
Yes.
But they've talked to me, just so I know what's going on.
Yep.
Can we move without the county, or do we have to wait on the county?
Technically, I need the county, but the state, um, is the one that would come in and shut them down if they were having an event out of their licensed premises. So I've spoken with these two, Ken and Teresa, the other day, just if we could maybe contact someone if this continues to be an issue.
Okay, because.
They're not getting responses from.
They're not, it's been.
Had they went down, I mean, for the fair, we had to go down.
That's what I suggested to them also, is you might have to just take a day, which is, and I'll bash on Jackson County right now, you might have to take a day to go down and deal with them because.
That's what we had to do.
It all seems like they had no idea what's going on.
She sta- stated she did the same and sat there forty-five minutes, and then the person was not very kind when they did agree to meet with her and told her they watched the cameras to see how long she was there, instead of answering her question. So they're, they're having some difficulty.
I think you're understanding it, but yes.
Yes.
And that's all I have.
All right.
I'm just surprised you said that Jackson County wasn't doing a great job, I've, I've wait, rave reviews from my side.
They do go on everything else, so.
Right, property taxes, all that stuff, I've got nothing.
All right, Alderman Knox?
I'd like to thank, uh, Chief Turner, Captain Christensen for their work and everything on this Santa bus. I won't say fiasco, but on this Santa bus issue and. For all your hard work and trying to, trying to deal with the individual.
Alderman Myers?
None tonight.
Uh, next up then, mayor's report, a couple of things, first of all, it got pointed out that I was tagged in a Facebook post about Front Street, so. I know, I, I guess this is, it sounds like it's maybe a mud pit right now, because I know that, I'm looking at you, Patrick, don't, you look pretty so like. I know, I mean, I know that rain kind of threw us off on the pavement, but do we know what the pavings, because I know.
Uh, so we got a progress report, uh, in the, or a meeting in the morning.
Okay.
Like ten AM, they were originally planning to do asphalt tomorrow, which obviously is probably delayed at this point, but I'll know more in the morning. But, uh, pretty much, uh, yeah, as it comes down now, um, the curbing, if, if anybody hasn't been down there, all the curbs are pretty well. Installed and they've started installing driveways at this point, um, they do got, they did more driveway work today and we'll plan to do more tomorrow and we'll have asphalt update in the morning, but.
Okay, so I mean, they're gonna get it in as quick as the weather allows at this point.
Yeah, the original plan was for tomorrow, but, but again, uh, I think at this point, it more than likely will be slightly delayed, but. For sure answers in the morning, so.
Okay. Uh, that is all I have, do we have a need for, no one has anything additional then? Well adjourned.